Yes. Yeah, he left.
Am I connected?
You are.
My name is Ron Marsh, 484 Rodway here in Tiverton. So many good points have been made, I'm not going to try to reiterate them. I do have a short list of reasons why I'm opposed to the proposed changes in the comp plan and in the zoning ordinance. But before I do, I'd just like to urge my fellow citizens to, number one, be brief; number two, most of all, be courteous. I don't think there's any place at all, in a place like, in a forum like this, for personal attacks on any person in this room. Here's my short list. I believe this development is way too big for Tiverton. It destroys our well-thought-out comprehensive development plan. It would bring a huge amount of traffic that we don't have now. It doesn't guarantee any tax revenue for a long time, and then, really, not even then. It will raise our insurance rates around town. It'll strain services and infrastructure. The developer has a poor reputation around this state, and most citizens are against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[81.11][81.11][applause] I believe Peter Monas has left. Is that correct? Oh, oh, there he is.[88.22][88.22][laughter]
Good evening. Peter Monas, 83, Captain Circle. As you know, there are two strong positions here. One, supporting the development, and another one, of course, is the local opposition. Two opinions, both polarized. Both groups have exaggerated their points. Tiverton will never support what they recommend for development in this town, as it's presented to the planning board. It'll take maybe 100 years unless there's a big economic boom, there's oil found in Rhode Island. This will never be developed, as said. And the other points made by opposition have been, not really, the distorted facts, but I don't want to cover that. My position is, I'm in favor of the amendment. Why? Because I'm opposed to have this area known as a residential zoning area. This is a very bad situation for the town. Way back when, 20 years ago, and what the comprehensive plan states today, this area is a town center area. 20 years ago, the town center area, the study, included Souza Road and the property that has been talked about tonight, and also the north side. Unfortunately, that town council did not act on behalf of the town. It was really, the town was in favor of that study. It sat back and did not do anything. And unfortunately, we can see the results today. We have a library dislocated, it's not in the center of this town. And there's many other factors. This area, we know, is the best area for commercial development. It's on the highway. North Main Road will not be developed, as people fantasize, because there's no traffic there, okay? You need traffic. That's why in 1950, that year, in that time period, there was 50% more traffic on Main Road, and Main Road was pretty prosperous. Why? Because there was no Newport Bridge. There was no Sycamore River Bridge. Everybody came from the Quinick Island across Stone Bridge, Portsmouth, Middletown, and Newport. Where did they shop? Fall River. What happened? 1956. Sycamore River Bridge was put up. What happened? Route 24 came along. Traffic went 24 to Fall River. They did their shopping, still there, but less, because Newport would get developed. The bridge was put in Newport, and of course Portsmouth has its own development, too. Okay.
Couple more, you've 30--
So, all right.
If three minutes is over.
My three minutes is over already?
Yeah.
The longest I ever talked. Okay, so, I'm really, it has a negative effect on residential. It should be converted over to, back to general commercial or mixed use. There was a mistake by the, 10, 12 years ago, that town council was inept, and they cut off their arm to save their hand. They didn't resolve the problems for big boxes. They said, "Let's put it residential." It's a big mistake. We know that. It's going to be a negative impact on the town. And I also like to offer an amendment, and I will pass it to the clerk, and I will read it. It says, involves Section 8 pedestrian bicycle circulation. At number D, "A public access path shall be constructed on the north side of the proposed area adjacent to Souza Road for pedestrians and bicycles as an alternate form of circulation." Thank you.
Thank you.[347.47][347.47][end of transcript] Andrew Tavares, Brian Mederes, and Jennifer Rowley. Andrew Tavares, I know Brian's here.
Yeah.
Hi, Brian Mederes, 127 Brunel Avenue. Just want to say, I, sorry? I am definitely opposed to changing the comprehensive plan for the reasons that you've heard. Comprehensive plan, and I was involved when I was on the council in the rewriting of it and the process, and the process was extensive. The community was involved. It was intended to reflect the will of the entire community, as much consensus as you could draw. If not, you're talking about the majority. I think you've seen tonight that the major, I mean, again, this may not be representative. You may think that the numbers in here were not representative. If you feel that way, you could always hold a referendum to find out. I think that you can tell from tonight--
Can't do that.
--the majority of people in town will not support this, do not support this. They didn't support it 10 years ago, they didn't support it 20 years ago, they don't support it now. More concerning to me is the process, the process that you followed, the process where we changed the comprehensive plan, as you all know. It's an extensive thing. It's not something where, you've already got a committee that's working on this, and you're going to ignore the committee, you're going to step over them, and you're going to go right to changing this for one developer. Now, we can, we can try to separate this and claim that this isn't about one developer, this is just something you woke up and decided to do one day. It's not. This is something that's being done for a particular developer, changing the comprehensive plan. That's not the way it was intended to work. It certainly doesn't represent the businesses you've heard from. They don't like it. The majority of the people in the town don't like it, don't think it's going to help them. They think it's going to hurt their quality of life. So who benefits? At the end of the day, you have the right to vote. You're the town council, you're supposed to be representing the people, you have the right to vote. You also have the responsibility and the obligation to explain to the people of this town why you voted the way you did, when you bypassed your own committee, when people are telling you they don't want it, it will not benefit them, when businesses are telling you it won't benefit them. Who does it benefit? Why this rush to do this? Why jump over the normal process except to help a developer? You all know as public officials, there's what's called the appearance of impropriety, and you've heard some people make accusations, which I don't think is fair. I've been a public official, I don't think it's fair to just pull something out and say, "Well, I heard that somebody's doing something." I think that's unfair. That being said, the appearance of impropriety, you have a responsibility to avoid that by following the normal process, by not jumping over and doing what you're doing. Because when we're looking at it, and the average person in Tiverton looks at it and says, "Why in the world is the council going against a room full of people? Why are they going against the majority?" You have to explain why. And if there's no good explanation, then people are going to jump to the assumption that there's some backroom deal that's been made. That's not good for anybody. It's not good for you, it's not good for the town of Tiverton. It's the wrong approach. If you truly feel that this change should be made, and this is in the best interest of Tiverton, by all means, pursue it. But pursue it through the normal process. Let your committee finish their work, get their recommendations, hold lengthy meetings with the public, and you're going to hear a lot of what you heard tonight. And then you can decide, in the normal process, if we should change the entire comp plan under this new thing that you've got, where quality of life is more about tax dollars and development than it is about the small-town nature of Tiverton. I don't think that's where people want to go, and I think if you follow the proper process, that's the conclusion you'll come to as well, and I think you have that responsibility. I would ask you to stop this process. This process is improper. I suggest you stop it, follow the normal process, bring about what you want. But please, don't do this, because this will be bad for Tiverton, to do it under this process, under this cloud that's now going to be hanging over you. It will be wrong, it will be bad for you, it will be bad for Tiverton, it'll be bad for Tiverton's business and climate, it will be bad in general. I urge you strongly--
Brian.
--to not change the comprehensive plan under these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you.[603.82][603.82][applause] Jennifer Rowley.
Good evening, town councilors. My name is Jennifer Jones Rashley. I live at 184 Highland Road. I was born in a small rural Kansas town. Since then, I've lived in Denver, Providence, Paris, Washington, Madrid, Rome, Rochester. I settled in Tiverton for the quality of life, for the beauty, the close-knit community, the open space, for my children, to raise my children in the best place I could. I'm a former library, I'm a former member of the Tiverton Library Board of Trustees. I'm a current Chair of the Education Committee for the South Coast Artists. The SCA is a regional organization that promotes and relies on the rural, small-town village character of Tiverton and neighboring, and neighboring towns. I strongly urge you, I, I am, pardon me, I am against the Tiverton Glen mega-development and zoning comprehensive plan changes that would allow this project. I'm concerned about the language that was used by the planning board in the amendment. The recommendation from the planning board uses the words "should" and "may" instead of the words "must" and "will." This language will allow any developer to come and do anything to our town. Instead of, instead of protecting our small, our small-town, the rural village community and sustaining it, anyone can do anything they want. If you ever tell a child they, they should or they may, think about telling a developer, "You should or you may develop in our town." They will do what they want if we do not tell them what they will do and what they must do. Thank you very much.[756.04][756.04][applause]
Thank you. You, you Callisto, you, yeah, Callisto. Elizabeth Carr. The next one would be Chi Lariano. Either one of you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Carr. I live at 204 Riverside Drive, and it's so late, I can hardly think anymore, so I don't know how the rest of the audience is. But I did stay because I do feel so strongly, and I think this is so important. And I'm going to read off a little sheet, because I think it just says it right out front. What you're trying to hear is that I am against the Tiverton Glen mega-development and the zoning and comp plan changes that would allow this project. Honestly, I actually work at a large bank that, in Cranston, that borders the other Carpentado Development, and I would not like to see that here in Tiverton. I do think it's really a 20th-century type of construct. We're going into the 21st century, and the responsibility of this town council and the town is to come up with a vision that we want to live with for us and for our children going forward. From what I understand, five years from now anyway, there's going to be a big Amazon warehouse, there's going to be drones with one-hour delivery. Who's going to drive to Tiverton to go shopping? You know, we have to think about the future, and whether this is something that is really feasible for us as well. The other concern that I have is, I did hear earlier, and I'm not as up-to-date on all the details as some of the people in the room are, but I did hear someone say that there's a legal appeal going on. And I don't understand how we can have a public hearing and then you guys can take a vote if there's a legal appeal that's in process. So I guess that would be a question I would have for you in terms of how you are going to handle it going forward. I do think there seems to be a lot more work that needs to be done, perhaps, and I also would request that you follow the proper process, avoid the impropriety, and also make sure that there will be no legal ramifications once you do make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.[913.48][913.48][applause]
You did call Peter Bromante?
Yeah, well, kind of.
Just wanted to make sure. So, Peter Bromante, 3804 Main Road in Tiverton. I'm a new resident here within the last year, so I'm learning a lot tonight. But my partner and I moved here and invested in a historic property that we've been restoring for the last year, because we're committed to this community and the vision that's outlined in the comprehensive plan. I'm here to say I'm totally against making changes to that comprehensive plan, as stated, and to share with you a little bit about what I learned tonight, as well as some of my own experience coming from the city of Providence in an urban neighborhood, in a National Register Historic District with a local district, that was incredibly impoverished, actually, more so than any community or subdivision here in, in the town of Tiverton. We worked with our town planning board and our historic commission, and I'm sorry to say, when we came here, I understood that I lived in Four Corners, which is a National Register Historic District, but the town does not have a local district, and it doesn't protect any of those assets. We're very fortunate to have three National Register Historic Districts here in the community of Tiverton. In my community, in the Armory District in Providence, we worked together to follow a comprehensive plan that looked at what those assets were, the natural assets, the historic fabric, the historic architecture, the urban amenities, including open space and parks, and we worked to establish rapport with people who invested in those assets that were there and outlined in the community's comprehensive plan. Over the 20 years that we lived there, I'm proud to say that that neighborhood has improved greatly, and that all of the businesses that have developed, many of them, are locally-owned and source businesses. We didn't need a big-box developer or retail outlet to accomplish that. What I've seen and what I've heard from tonight are some astounding things to me. 1,500 residents, voters, who have signed their intention to be opposed to this. 36 businesses who are opposed to this. My good friends that I'm meeting in Tiverton Four Corners, who are doing amazing things, where every weekend I see plenty of people coming from New York and Pennsylvania, New Jersey, who are spending their dollars here locally, and those dollars are retained by the locally-owned businesses and recirculated back into this community. And I know that it must be very difficult for you all to think about, "Oh, we're going to be saved by this silver bullet." It's not true, if you look at it from a purely economic point of view. So I urge you to think carefully, intelligently, that community spent clearly lots of time on this comprehensive plan. I've only begun to delve into learning about it, but I'm so pleased to be part of a community that shares a vision, that looks at our natural assets and resources, our landscape, the historic elements that we have, and a community that's willing to do the hard work in partnership with you. That's what I've heard. To say, "Look at what we've done. Don't short-change it now for one developer who has a questionable history at best," and to mortgage all of our futures. So please, reject this plan and vote no. Thank you.[1128.23][1128.23][applause]
I don't believe Chi Lariano's here anymore. Is she here? I thought I saw her left. Charles Bradshaw, John Perkins. And the next would be Ian Devine.
My name is Charles Michael Bradshaw. I'm the second of my name, United States Marine Corps Sergeant, former. Live at 62 Thebault Lane. I'd like to start with a simple point. The point is that when you lie, or rather, when you are not saying everything in terms of what constitutes the mall mega-development proposal, the problem is not with the lie, but rather with what you are specifically implying. Here, I think we should refer to a Marx Brothers movie, one of the later ones, Go West, where at the very beginning, Groucho enters a train station and approaches the box office to buy a ticket. Groucho gives the clerk a roll of dollar notes, saying, "It's okay, don't count it, it's all there." The clerk nonetheless counts the dollar notes and says, "But it's not all there." To which Groucho replies, "Well, I told you not to count it."[1224.58][1224.58][laughter] Here, Groucho said, "Don't count it," with the implication being that, "Don't bother, everything is okay." Can't we use here the unfortunate presentation of this mall mega-developmental proposal as a similar example, and claim that with what was implied in terms of benefits as it related to the local economy, was the same implication as that of Groucho and the aforementioned example? Nonetheless, the community looked into it, discovering that what was included in the proposal was many other things. For example, significant changes to the comprehensive plan, zoning regulations, no full build-out commitment, no net tax revenue commitment, the strange coincidence of a casino, et cetera, to which we can't imagine the response from you all proposing this, being, "But I told you not to look into it." I think that we should, what should be emphasized is that this moment here is a fragile one. Fragile in the sense that more and more, we are being proposed something with its dangerous elements being hidden. A simple example of this would be, you want alcohol but without alcohol, you want coffee but without the caffeine, ice cream but without the fat, and so on. So what are the dangerous elements here? To see the truth, our common sense tells us that we don't see things clearly when we have some glasses on, which distort our vision. And what you have to do is take the glasses off and see things the way they are. It's the opposite, I claim. You need the glasses, which means you need education. Truth does not come spontaneously to you, and I think we have to accept this pessimist message. So what does the proposal look like? This pretty proposal that we didn't get to see with the PowerPoint presentations, right? If we put the glasses on, basically, it looks like Fall River. For example, so, if one were to retrace the proposal of the new Harbor Mall, one would find similar implications made in terms of economic advantages. What I think is important about the response from this community is the fact that a certain taboo has been broken. That it's allowed, that you, in your actions here jeopardizing the plan, have allowed us to think that there is something wrong with the way we are approaching development in our community as such, i.e. the complete disregard of this council towards the comprehensive plan. But that's it. Let's be clear here, we don't have the answers, which is why we should absolutely resist the kind of blackmail that you are offering, which I call a sort of clinching blackmail. You know the clinching in boxing, where you embrace your opponent?
Yeah, three minutes are over, so just kind of wrap it up, please.
So, we see elements of this clinching blackmail in the reaction of those who are proposing the mega-mall development, that the response of the community, albeit mostly negative, on balance, is a positive thing. However, because the response is not for something specific to your liking, in terms of economic advantages, we should support the proposal as a concrete measure in terms of proposed revenues. This is where we should resist you. The dissatisfaction that has emerged from the community should be the point of focus for you, the town council, as a certain zero-level starting point to start thinking, by looking at the negative response as the answer to a question which we, we should attempt to formulate together. Where no one has the privilege to pretend to have answers, but maybe we can start asking the right questions, and through this interaction, something may emerge. You don't know, and neither do the people. So why? To conclude, the immediate reply to this would have been, "But you were dreaming, is change impossible, so on, et cetera." Ah, but what is possible and impossible today, you may have noticed, is something extremely strange. On the one hand, concerning this particular mall and mega-development, anything is possible in terms of taxes, revenue, jobs, casinos, libraries. However, when asked to spend a little more on schools, roads, infrastructure, it is immediately, "Ha-ha, impossible." The seriousness of our situation is the following one, and again, at the same time, this should be paradoxically--
Sir, you need to wrap it up, please.
--the same thing that is the source of our hope. Namely, when people ask me, "Really, do you think things can change?", my answer is, "I don't know, but look around you, and things are already changing radically." And if you tell me nothing can change, my response is, "No, it can, you look around you, things are already changing like crazy." And if we let things change in the direction they are already changing automatically, what you're proposing, the casino, this mega-mall development, we are approaching something that'd be far worse than what remains in Fall River.
Thank you.[1513.73][1513.73][applause]
My wife and I, Nancy Driggs, that is, have been around here for 15, 20 years, first Main Road, now Peaceful Way. There isn't anything that I thought I was going to say tonight that hasn't been said several times over, and I guess the only thing I want to say as a result is, really, looking at the soul of, one, what this town is, and I hope you guys will look at the soul of who you are. I find it really, on some level, sort of unfathomable that I'm feeling as insecure about how this may turn out, as I do. And I hope there are enough of you that I am wondering as to where you are, are in fact, wondering where you are as well, and we'll be all pretty well in the end. But soul-searching is necessary. This is a very crucial time, and I sure wouldn't want to have my mark in Tiverton be what might come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.[1612.46][1612.46][applause] Ian Devine, Jim Devine, Greg Jones.
For the record, I'd like to say that I agree with everything my wife said--[1649.76][1649.76][laughter] --about this and everything else.
Smart man.[1655.03][1655.03][laughter]
Madam President, Town Council members, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. Our comprehensive community plan was written by the people of this town to guide development by laws intended to be proactive, not reactive. Changes to our plan demanded by the developer make a mockery of that whole process. If we're going to allow developers to write our comp plan, why have one at all? If we change our comp plan to accommodate the developer, how can we say no to the next developer? If we don't control growth now, how will we control it in the future? How do we prevent mall sprawl? I think we're setting a horrible precedent here if we change it. I urge you to save our comprehensive plan. I believe the majority of people in this town do not want a mall, or a Glen, or a crossing, and I think we all know what is being proposed here. We've seen the articles in the paper, we've seen the pictures. I think we all know what this is, and that's why we're all here. We highly value the rural seaside character of this town. Look at the petitions, look at the number of people who appeared at the planning board hearings in opposition, look at the audience here, look at the websites, shovel against, I haven't seen any for. Look at the letters to the editor on our local papers and letters to town offices. I see many signs along our roadways. Urgent you to vote no. I haven't seen a single sign in favor of the mall. A petition of over, the number keeps changing, last night when I counted, it was 1,300, I think we're up to 1,500, signatures by town residents and opposition to the mall. What you may not realize, hasn't been mentioned, is that in collecting those signatures, approximately four out of five people, when asked, gladly sign. That's about 80%. I believe that's probably close to how this town feels, about 80% are opposed, and after this meeting, I think it may even be higher. I urge you to listen to the good citizens of Tiverton. Finally, let's save our rural character. People move to this town because they are attracted to what the town is. Let's celebrate this town for what it is. And it's a great town. I love this town. And it's a great town, I love this town. Let's not try to make it into something it isn't. The proposed mega mall trashes one of our two historic districts. Why would we want to do this? Why would we want to replace historic houses along Main Road with big box stores and billboards? Does anyone think this is a good idea? Let's be clear, if this proposal goes through, the historic Osborne House at 1148 Main Road is toast, and the rest of the Osborne-Bennett Historical District not far behind. If you have any questions about whether or not that would happen, all you need to do is look up the Historic Providence Fruit and Produce Warehouse and see how that worked out at the hands of the developer. In summary, the process here is flawed, the people in this town don't want a mall for so many reasons, a mega mall is just plain wrong for Tiverton. I appreciate the difficult position the Planning Board has managed to put you in. But I do know that you all work hard as councillors for this town. I think we appreciate the amount of, great amount of time you put in, and I know that you honestly represent the people of this town, and you will do what is right for Tiverton. I urge you to listen to your constituents, just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Ralph, Ralph Doliber, Ann Dupre, Dupree, Dupre. And the next would be Eileen Sanford.
Madam President, could you tell Mr. Souza to please be quiet? I would like to hear the audience.
Mr. Souza, please be quiet.
Mega mall. It's a mega mall, Joe.
All right, stop, please.
Good evening, Tiverton. The very fact I'm--
Wait a minute, excuse me.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ralph Doliber.
Thank you, any address?
40 Ridge Side Lane, Tiverton, Rhode Island, live right down the street.
Go ahead.
The very fact I'm standing here tonight pleading to our town council not to destroy Tiverton's community plan clearly demonstrates that the council has completely abdicated their responsibilities to the residents of Tiverton. The Tiverton Planning Board took it upon themselves to rewrite entire sections of Tiverton's community plan with these so-called amendments that harmfully alter our zoning and community plan to conform with Carpionato's demands. An action which will allow further mega development and which clearly violates part of Chapter 45-22.2 of the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act, which says to avoid, quote, "to avoid conflicting requirements and reactive land use regulations and decisions." Heck, this whole entire process has been reactive. Well, the Planning Board has clearly overstepped its bounds in a big way by gutting our community plan to comply with Carpionato. They have done the exact opposite of what they were appointed for. Our town council should have put a stop to this long before it reached this point. What gives? Past developments that have been denied have offered Tiverton three to five acres for a fit use. One developer even offered to pay for a new library. They were all denied for a good reason. But Carp-- quiet, Joe. But Carpionato offers us nothing at all, and we bend over backwards for them by ruining our community plan and blowing our zoning wide open? These are the very people that are suing Pawtucket over breach of contract, yet Carpionato are the ones who breached the contract. We're going to do business with these people? Are you serious? Now, please bear with me here, this is very relevant. Recently, we had the Financial Town Referendum. The Budget Committee proposed, the Budget Committee's proposed budget lost to one proposed by a Tiverton resident. It appears that all of our town councillors, except for Councilman Souza, wanted the Budget Committee's proposal to win and were unhappy with the results. A disappointed councillor, Brett Pelletier, said in part that, quote, "A very small group can hijack the budget process." But Tiverton residents who voted had the final say on the budget, not a very small group. Now, let's take that same quote from Councilman Pelletier and substitute "planning" for "budget." Here we go, quote, "A very small group can hijack the planning process." That rings a lot truer. The small group being the eight members of the Tiverton Planning Board. No public vote, just eight people to decide what they want it to happen. Not Tiverton, them, eight people. Now it sits in front of the seven members of our town council, awaiting final approval. No public vote, just seven people to decide Tiverton's fate. How can that be? Because the whole comprehensive community plan process has been hijacked by a very small group. That's how. Now, we all know Councilman Souza is in favor of this mega mall, but did you know that he's also in favor of euthanizing? That means killing stray pets to save our boarding costs? Are the rest of our town council going to vote along with a man who would have stray dogs put to death to save a few bucks? I would certainly hope not. Please vote to save our zoning and community plan.
I don't even know where I am here. Eileen, oh, Deb, no. Ian, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just lost track of where I was.
Which microphone? Can you hear me?
Um, yeah.
My name is Ann Dupree, and I own Secconic Grooming and Pet Health on Main Road. I've lived here for over 30 years and have a business here because there is no mall. Tiverton is a rare refuge. Regarding the comment made earlier that this land has been empty for 30 years, nothing could be farther from the truth. That land is far from being empty. It is filled with layer upon layer of all forms of life and beauty, and we like it that way. The mentality to replace and pave over natural beauty with man-made commercialism is disturbing and irresponsible to even have been considered. Leave it alone. I deeply oppose altering the comprehensive plan, number one, because I feel the massive crush of bumper-to-bumper traffic on our main artery roads and side streets alone will deter current and potential customers from visiting my businesses, my business, and other businesses. Every day, I watch as my customers safely walk their dogs down the sidewalk. Kids of all ages ride bicycles and stand and wait for their buses on the corner of our quiet streets. Now, let's picture this scenario on Route 6 alongside the Dartmouth Mall, or the Swansea Mall, or alongside four lanes of traffic in Cranston beside the Chapel View. The comprehensive plan, as written, reflects a town of seaside beauty and protects it. What is the point of having a comprehensive plan designed to protect us from mega developments such as this from overwhelming our town if we are actually on the verge of blatantly tossing out, selling out, and disrespecting it? It is extraordinarily bizarre to me that it is even being considered. It takes creativity, time, and teamwork to develop a thriving, interesting, unique town, all the while maintaining and cultivating its natural beauty and attributes. It's why everyone in opposition of this mall that is now morphing into a small city lives Remember, this developer does not live here or pay taxes. They don't care about us and our small businesses and the impending doom to follow after they destruct, bulldoze, and destroy our beauty, peace, habitat, and they skip town. Giving Carpionato their way to alter our sacred comprehensive plan not only paves a massive 64-acre parking lot, but it also paves the way for the demise of Tiverton as we know it and take for granted. But worst of all, it paves the way for what is born from every mega mall like this, the ugly offspring of urban sprawl. If you truly love and respect this town, each of you will vote in favor of the wishes of the vast majority of the residents, the ones that voted for you to represent them. Your decision should not be based on what you want or what you think is right, but what we want. And we want you to respect and protect our comprehensive plan and reject this developer. Malls are a dime a dozen and will soon be pennies a dozen, and small seaside towns like ours, we are one in a million.
Ann, your time is up.
I'm done. And we are growing more rare by the day. We want to keep it that way. This town has spoken. We don't want this mall at all.
Eileen Sanford, Eileen Sanford, Bruce Hathaway. Bruce is, is Bruce here? You're not Bruce Hathaway? Oh, yeah, all right. Whoa, I'm getting tired.
I'm going to be a little bit drier than the last couple of people. I actually wrote something that addresses specific sections of the comprehensive community plan. Line item, several line items. Can you hear me okay?
Could you give me your address, please?
Sure, it's 43 Lewis Street, Lewis Avenue in Tiverton. I oppose the proposed changes for the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan to allow a mixed-use development district, aka MUD, because even though the proposed changes to the comp plan are major, they do not address all of the areas of noncompliance with the comp plan. And approving the proposed changes would create a host of conflicts within the document as a whole. Some examples from our approved comp plan. In Section 10.7 of the comp plan, Economic Development Policies, Commercial and Industrial Zoning, under New Commercial and Mixed-Use Development, it states, "It is the stated goal of this chapter to provide for economic development in Tiverton which provides benefit in terms of net tax revenue and jobs while not negatively impacting the town's cherished small-town character, burdening its road system, and contributing to sprawl." A traffic study done by Carpionato, the developer, stated that the traffic for such, for their MUD, would be 24,880 car trips per day on average. This crippling increase in traffic on our roads will surely negatively impact the town's cherished small-town character, burden its road system, and contribute to sprawl, and is therefore in violation of the comp plan. Section 10.7 of the comp plan further states, "The town must balance the rights of property owners to develop with a desire of the community at large, to manage such development so that it enhances the town's character, not takes away from it." Well, 24,880 car trips per day, per their study, times 365 days in a year equals 9,812,000 car trips per year for their mega development. I state that over 9 million car trips per year added to our roads does not enhance the town's character and is therefore in violation of the comp plan. Policy 2.A of the comp plan states, "They should support and promote new retail development, new retail commercial developments which primarily serve local needs and reflect or complement the unique character of Tiverton." Per the Carpionato traffic study, the vast majority of traffic coming to this development would come from Fall River and beyond. By definition, it would be regional mall, housing, and mega development, which counts on bringing the majority of shoppers from outside of Tiverton. This does not complement the unique character of Tiverton and is therefore not in keeping with Policy 2.A as this project would not primarily serve local needs. I only have a few more. Section 8.6 of the current comp plan, Circulation Policies, Roadway System, specifically states, "Traffic signals are inconsistent with the functioning and character of the community's roadways and should be avoided wherever possible." The Carpionato's traffic study wants to add six new traffic lights to the town of Tiverton. We only have four working now, so they want to increase that to 10. Three traffic lights on Fish Road and three on Main Road, all within a quarter of a mile of each other, from Route 24 to Souza Road. This is therefore in direct violation of Section 8.6 of the comp plan.
Bruce, you only have a, your time is done, so just--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--kind of wrap this up for me, please.
Can I, two more sentences? Thank you. If we add the proposed mega development traffic to existing traffic on Main Road and Fish Road, then the Main and Fish Roads will handle more car trips per day as the, as the Secconic Bridge, while at the same time adding six new traffic lights. This is per the Rhode Island Department of Transportation numbers. More traffic than goes on the Secconic Bridge every day will go on Main Road and Fish Road. Thank you, I'm against this project.
Mike Sylvia, Todd Moore, Natalie Bergeron-Kief.
Good evening, councillors, I'm Mike Sylvia, I live at 263 Indian Point Road. And I have a lot of notes here, but I'm probably going to speak from the heart instead of the head, so I hope I don't come off too inarticulate, but I'm making a personal appeal here. When I looked at the changes to the comprehensive plan, two things really stuck out with me, and it was the words "town center," it was, those words were crossed out, and then in turn we were replacing that with "large-scale development." And I don't think that goes with what Tiverton is all about, and certainly not the Tiverton that I have longed to live in. I grew up in Fall River, and here's the personal part of it. I grew up in Fall River, and when I was a kid, my father used to work at the Coachman Restaurant. And every Thursday when he got paid, we would drive down to Tiverton, we would go to Gray's Ice Cream, and when we drove through Tiverton, I always thought, gee, this is so pretty, I want to live here someday. Well, it took almost 50 years, but I finally did, I was able to buy a home here. And I really love this town, and that's why I'm here. I drove down from Boston tonight, I work in Boston. I've made some great friends here. I discovered a community that I had no idea existed. Some of you I've become friendly with. And I just don't think that this fits the nature of the town, the changes that we're proposing here. I think it's about taxes and tax relief, and I think there are the creative things that we could do to address some of the tax problems or perception of problems that we have. There's, there's rate changes that we could propose that don't require us giving away the town and changing our zoning or changing our comprehensive plan. We could charge more for non-owner-occupied properties, reduce owner-occupied properties. We could charge more for commercial property taxes. Our commercial property tax rate is actually lower than some of the Massachusetts communities surrounding us. We could charge a land tax, a land conservancy tax, someone had mentioned that. We could charge more for development, more development, more residential property actually puts more of a strain on our resources, but let's like make that more difficult. There are ways that we could shift the tax burden without introducing something this big, something this large scale, which really has no place in our community. With that, I really beg you, pretty much, to keep the comprehensive plan in place. I think the comprehensive plan, the way that it was set up, had a longer-term vision. It's something that we have to commit to, something that we have to invest in. And I think the comprehensive plan also protects us. It protects us from some of our whims, some of our bad decisions that could come about because of desperation. It protects us from you, and it also protects us mostly from a developer, which I think is critically important. So with that, I implore you, vote no. Thank you.
Todd Moore, 991 Seapilot Avenue, 20-year Tiverton resident, and I completely support all the comments that have been made, the vast majority, I think there have been maybe two in support of this development proposal, for all the reasons stated, especially the effect, at least for the first part of this, on the comprehensive plan. I had, I've sent you all a letter about this, I've sent you a couple of letters about this, but I think what's very telling and what's very disturbing to me is the, I would say, this last-minute amendment that the development group has brought in, that was stamped on July 2nd. It was, there weren't available copies when I came in, I had to come down--
Yeah, we have to talk about the comp plan.
I understand, but I'm saying it has bearing on, in terms of who you're dealing with, the character of the people you're dealing with, these last-minute changes. And I think that goes to, since one piece leads to another, it leads to another, that's why. In terms of the comprehensive plan itself, all the reasons the shopping center would mar the town's historic character, be a drain on-- mar the town's historic character, be a drain on municipal resources such as water, sewage, building inspection, fire, and public safety, create hideous traffic problems, and would undermine local businesses. What happens to a local business like Coastal Roasters if there's a Starbucks? What happens to Humphrey's Building Supply if there's a Home Depot? They're dead. I'm not going to go north of 24 if there's a nightmare of traffic. Instead of going to the CVS in Teverton, I'll go to the CVS in Portsmouth. It'll be easier to get there. So I think the goals of the comprehensive plan to preserve the character of the town and to encourage local development and business are completely thrown out the window with this plan. I think you cannot trust these people, nor their intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, excuse me, Robert Coulter. Oh, I didn't even notice him there.
Good evening, Rob Coulter, Lawton Avenue. I just, there've been a lot of comments made tonight, I'm in agreement with the vast majority of them. Certainly as to the process, I think there's a very, you have a real big problem, I think, with, if you're thinking of voting yes at this point, please consider that there have been a number of items of testimony given by paper which you haven't had the chance to review. There've been, I think, three proposals, actually, that should be considered before you would, before you would rush through to a yes vote. Some speakers have been turned away, I believe, because of confusion about whether they could speak to this matter versus the zoning. And I definitely think you have an open meetings law litigation waiting for you because of the notice and the last-minute changes. Having said that, what I want to focus on more is the economic piece. There's been, most of the conversation tonight has been about the comprehensive plan, all very legitimate concerns. But the economic piece hasn't had a lot of, a lot of attention tonight. And I really think that's important for all of you, because the planning board doesn't have to consider the economic impact in a way that I believe you are responsible to consider, and it hasn't been spoken to that much tonight. And I think, as you know, of course, as a formal town councillor and Budget Committee member and a very zealous advocate for taxpayers, you might be surprised to hear that I do not think that this is in the interest of the taxpayers of Teverton, at least as presented so far. And what I would ask you to do is focus on the fiscal impact study, because I think there's a number of pretty significant flaws in that. And what I would like to do is just read the eight categories of them, and then with your permission, Madam President, I'll just turn my comments into the clerk. The fiscal impact study, of course, is about a year old. The per capita multiplier method that is used extrapolates what we have now, but we don't have anything now that is similar to what's being proposed, so that extrapolation just doesn't work. Probably one of the biggest flaws in the fiscal impact study that you have is that it does not impact, it doesn't consider the collateral impact on other businesses. So we've heard about many of our great businesses in town, you've heard some of them tonight. So you can't just count the potential benefits of new business without considering the negative impact on the other businesses that might be, might be there. Probably the largest concern that I have, especially as a taxpayer advocate, because, and by the way, I actually think that we have enough tax revenue already and that we have a spending problem in this town, more than a tax revenue problem in this town. But the, in any event, I think if there was a way to find common ground here, and if this proposal was restricted to just what was once highway commercial and didn't expand beyond that, then maybe there would be a way to get common ground here. But there needs to be guarantees, if this is being sold as a tax relief project, and there needs to be guarantees in place if we're all going to co-invest in this together. I think that there is a minor flaw in the use of market values based on the current market values, but the, but the study uses the tax rate in the past. And because of the revaluation, I think that that overstates the potential impact of the tax relief. Two other points are a little bit more harder to reduce, but there's something in the, in the study that claims that we don't have to worry about the impact on our roads because those are state roads. I don't, the state is not exactly taking care of our roads. I mean, let's, I try to move this to be a little bit more of a realistic assessment. And I'm also a little bit concerned about the addendum. As I read it, states that our schools don't have enough prestige to draw the type of, type of purchasers of these properties that would be of concern to us. And I actually kind of find that pretty offensive. And I, you know, it's a small comment, it's in the back of the addendum, but I think it's a pretty important point. And I don't know how a town council could approve a project in part based on an assertion that our schools are not prestigious enough.
Rob.
Fine, my last comment, I apologize. My last comment is really just sums up what we've heard over and over again. A lot of these other impacts, such as noise, traffic congestion, those aren't really reduced to numbers, and the fiscal impact study makes no attempt to really address that. So I think we really need to spend a lot more time thinking about that if you really want to prove this is tax relief. So just in summing up, I just want to, the theme I would like to stress, because we've heard so many of the good speakers, is it's your job to think about these economic considerations in a way that it's not the planning board's job. So though they may have put you in a tough spot, in a way, they really haven't, to the point that it's okay for you to go your own way, because you have to look at the full economic picture. Thank you.
Wayne Kozenski.